Father. Five o'clock, everybody please rise. Amendment case tonight will be done by Pastor Matt Olson from Trinity Baptist Church and he's here with his wife. Thank you so much for being here. Pleasure to meet you, we'll be done by Councilman Burden. Okay, Councilman, Pastor, whenever you're ready.
All right, let us pray.
Yes, sir. Know therefore this day, and consider it in thy heart, that the Lord be his God in heaven above and upon the earth beneath, there is none else. It's he that sits upon the circle of the earth, and the inhabitants thereof are as grasshoppers. It's he that stretches out the heavens as a curtain and spreadeth them out as a tent to dwell in. Blessed be the name of God forever and ever, for wisdom and might are his, and he changes the times and the seasons. He removeth kings and seteth up kings. He giveth wisdom unto the wise, and knowledge to them that know understanding. He revealeth the deep and secret things. He knoweth what is in the darkness, and light dwelleth within. The king's heart in this council is in the hand of the Lord, as the rivers of water he turneth at witherssoever he will. Grant to them, Lord, your wisdom. The wisdom, that is, from above, is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, easy to be entreated, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality, without hypocrisy. And the fruit of righteousness is sown in peace of them that make peace. Lord, may the council's leadership today help create a peaceful climate in the city of Centerville and its residents. Grant, grant that the residents and visitors of Centerville would obey them that had the rule over them, and would submit themselves, for the council watch for their souls, as they that must give account, that they may do it with joy and not with grief. We give you thanks, Father, for our democratic republic and the privilege of having a voice in our government, for the freedoms and liberty we enjoy, that began with our founding fathers continuing to this present, and for eternal lives that is freely offered to each one through the sacrifice of the Lamb of God, the Lord Jesus Christ, the God Creator and Sustainer of the universe. Words in his name we pray, amen.
Amen. Praise the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. Thank you, thank you so much, that was an outstanding prayer. Really, I really felt welcome to everybody. So happy to have everybody here. You know, I see so many prime military, I guess I could call the defenders' staff. Oh, well, it's great to have all you, everybody here with us tonight. I'm sorry we couldn't have the Veterans' Observance Day last Friday, but the rain just sort of stopped it, and we weren't smart enough to have a backup. But, first Sergeant promised me we will, for the next one, right? Okay, so, I guess we're ready for it now. Councilman, will you also?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Andy Cannon, who is a citizen of Centerville, representing Rolling Thunder Georgia Three, and he's also the owner of the Centerville Snail Grove Seafood Restaurant, for some comments.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Andy Cannon. I'm a member of Rolling Thunder Georgia Three. We're a national nonprofit organization that publicizes the POW MIA issue. We educate the public that many POWs were left behind, and to correct the past and, and protect the future veterans from being left, left behind should they become prisoners of war or missing in action. There's still over eighty thousand servicemen still unaccounted for from past wars. Twelve hundred of those are from the state of Georgia. There are eighty four, there are eighty four chapters of Rolling Thunder across the United States. We are the only chapter in Georgia. And we're, we're also dedicated and very passionate about helping our veterans. We're here today to honor our veterans. There are many veterans from our Rolling Thunder group here in attendance today, as well as Mayor Harley, Councilman Evans, and Councilman Armijo. Thank you all for your service. I'm a lifelong resident of Houston County and a thirty year resident of Centerville. My wife and I have lived here for thirty years, and other business owners like us, we often display the letters E D I M G I A F A D on our signs in front of our business. I have that on our sign today. It stands for every day in middle Georgia is Armed Forces Appreciation Day. It also means every day in middle Georgia is Veterans Day. Rolling Thunder honors our veterans every single day. I think I can speak for everybody in the room when I say, I'm proud to live in this Robbins Air Force Base community. We cherish our veteran, we cherish our veteran community. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about what Rolling Thunder does for our veterans. We support our veterans by monetary donations. We're there for their families in their time of grief. We lay wreaths at cemeteries all around middle Georgia during Christmas time. We volunteer at veterans' home in Macon that relies on civic organizations and donations from the public. This, this past summer, our second annual Remembering Heroes fundraiser raised over thirty-nine hundred dollars for the Andersonville National Cemetery to buy new flags. We also raise American flags and POW flags at over sixty businesses, government agencies, and schools, and homes around, around One Rock's area. We recently partnered with Combat Hero Bike Build. They are an organization that takes donated motorcycles and converts the hand controls and the foot controls so disabled veterans can ride. Three months ago, three of our members went to Kansas to pick up a motorcycle and hauled it back and, and donated it to a disabled veteran who lives in Hawkinsville. We also, last month, we also picked up a motorcycle and, and delivered it to a double amputee in North Georgia. We will soon join Habitat for Humanity to build a home, and some of these homes are for our veterans. We have a dear friend of Rolling Thunder Georgia Three, who's an honorary member, and he was a former board member of a previous chapter of Rolling Thunder in Columbus, Georgia. His name is Mr. William Dewey Freeman. He served at the end of World War Two, and he served in Korea. He was captured, released, and captured again. And on the death walk to the prison camps, Mr. Freeman walked a thousand miles in three months. While he was captured, he, he endured horrific conditions. He helped many men survive, and he helped many men escape. He faked being insane while he was in captivity. The Chinese and the Korean guards were afraid of the, and superstitious of the crazies. Once on a wood detail, Mr. Freeman was poked in the back with a bayonet, and he spit his dentures out, and the guards were freaked out, and they ran running and screaming. They were, I guess they'd never seen false teeth before. He had false teeth since he was about twenty years old. Mr. Freeman's memoirs can be found on the Rolling Thunder Georgia Three Facebook page. He was released at the end of the war in nineteen fifty-three, and he was in many hospitals before returning home. Mr. Freeman passed away this May at the age of ninety-three. Mr. Freeman's great grandson, nine-year-old Evan Muir, and his little brother and mother, wanted to remember their great, their hero veteran, and they started an operation, a campaign called Operation Never Forget. They wanted to keep his, his memory and his story alive. They, they wanted to raise a thousand dollars for Rolling Thunder Georgia Three, so we can continue and further our mission of helping veterans. They wanted to walk a hundred miles in thirty days. They reached, Evan soon reached his goal of a thousand dollars, he raised his goal to two thousand dollars. Then his story went viral on Facebook and the local news media. He soon caught the attention of his classmates. They started walking with him, carrying pictures of Mr. Freeman and stories of this, this hero. The TV station in Atlanta aired his story, and Evan met his newly elected congressman the other night, and the congressman was, said he was going to carry Evan's story all the way to Capitol Hill. Evan, his walk ended last Friday on, on Veterans Day. Three of our members left at four o'clock in the morning, last Friday morning on Veterans Day, to drive to Evan's school in North Georgia for a presentation at an assembly at Evan's school. Evan raised nearly five thousand dollars. And, and what a heartwarming story of a nine-year-old's love for his great-grandfather and his hero. I found out this morning that Evan was honored last night by the mayor of Brazelton, Georgia, for, for his service. He stood before the mayor and council to tell his story last night, and I'm sure this little nine-year-old boy was not near as nervous as I am right now. I just wanted to thank the city of Centerville for inviting us and allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move to a moment of silence and laying of the brief by the enlisted association president-elect Jim Prockner and Ernie Munson. So during this presentation, we ask everyone please stand. We thank everyone for the moment of silence. If we would, we'd like to take a photo up front with everybody that's here, who participate and those that are visitors as well, to take a front, a picture of him, probably to be concerned. I appreciate everybody coming out there. Our community is, thank you, tire service.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, back to session now. I just can't describe how overwhelmed I am with that, that was such a good, good thing. Open is here, we have approval letter to, to the flock, Centerville Police Flock, Councilman Armijo and Chief Duncan. Yeah, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. A few months ago, we met and we wanted to come to agreement with Flock to place cameras around the city. And you authorized me to make a, to sign the agreement, the MOU. This agreement was for five years. But now, all the agency heads and the chairman of the missions have come together and have an agreement they want to present to Flock for a four-year agreement that will be paid in full for four years for the entire county. At the end of those four years, that's when the individual citizens and counties will have to burden the price of the cameras themselves then. At the point, at this point, Centerville has, I have placed ten cameras on the map for the city with twenty-five hundred dollars per camera, so it will approximately be twenty-five thousand dollars per year to use the cameras within the city. The cameras will only record tags, they will not distribute that information over, but unto the cities that use that information. And we can also share the information through the United States with other agencies, which, which has been done now. The agreement that we signed is a five-year agreement. It stated that the Flock was going to come to agreement with the city of Centerville for the use of their cameras. But for the reading on the, on the agreement, on the MOU, it states that there's no money to be tendered at the time of this agreement, and that it was for the use of the city to get, relative for us to get to know the system before any further plans were made. At this time, all the cities, all of the departments are ready to go, move forward with the plan for the four-year plan with Flock. And we just need approval for us to move forward with this plan. We do have one more meeting on the eighteenth that Mr. Stone gave advice that we can place ten, ninety more cameras within the county, and that will be done on the eighteenth. But as far as Centerville, I don't see us placing any more cameras to increase the price that we are giving for fee. So I just need approval to go ahead and move forward with the agreement with Flock.
Okay, Mayor, so I make a motion that we move forward with the agreement with Flock for the twenty-five, twenty-five cameras?
No, sir, ten cameras.
Ten cameras. Okay, and you read that, that I signed the letter that we sent to the county, approve with you, or show the approval? Have a, most have a second?
I have a second, but I got a couple of questions, Mayor.
Okay.
Chief, I see here we have a map where we kind of got some pin drops of where the cameras are going to be located, but you give me an idea more specifically where those locations are on this, this map I'm looking at, it's hard to tell.
I put them in all major intersections coming into the city, so the cameras could be, get tags coming in and leaving. The first set will be up here at Collins and Watson, get traffic coming into the city. We have one at Collins and Church Street. We have two at Collins, I mean at Church Street and Gunn. We have two at Gunn and Forty-One, and we will have one at Thompson Row and one at End of White Row.
Okay, so all those arteries come into the United City?
Yes, sir.
And I, I know the answer to this, but I just want to give you a chance to, to answer this question for, for our friends that are here listening tonight. Correct if I'm wrong, but these cameras are in no way equipped or in any way will issue citations of any kind of video.
No, sir, they have an investigative purpose only.
Thank you for that, Chief.
And from my understanding, Chief, I may ask, this system has already been used in places and it's been affected, then why use a mad gun?
It's in use at this moment with One Rock Police Department. I think they have at least seventeen cameras now, and the cameras have also helped them solve murder, shooting cases, and they was maybe tried to finish after they've seen, within One Rock, it's just about on.
This is not a system where somebody's going to be tasked with sitting and monitoring these cameras. You're going to go to this system looking for something specific?
Specific, yes, sir. It has come around because I can just put in there and say I wanted a black cover and a yellow top, I can put that in there, and it'll search the system on the time frame, and anything that comes up, it'll alert me.
So, Chief, we, we're not paying anything for four years?
For four years, no sir.
So, I know that's far out, but do we know where that money will come from? Maybe we'll be built into our budget and, yeah, we'll be able to do it?
Yes, at the time, I can absorb that, probably my finance portion of the budget, because right now we're doing pretty good and we are exceeding.
We know about it plenty ahead, we could even put it in service, I don't want to expose it.
Yes, sir, we could.
You know, the cost is twenty-five hundred dollars per camera.
Yes, sir.
We were talking to the Flock distributors, and he said they have not had a change in their price for ten years, it's without them, and they don't anticipate any change, so the price should remain costly.
And also, one extra thing, the district attorney office will pay for any damage or moved camera within those first four years. After the, anything goes wrong, we are not responsible about, on the year five, we will be responsible for that.
If it costs money to move the camera, you decide you need a better location, they'll send a team over here and I think it's five hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
To move, and they'll move it, but DA will pay for it. Okay, what are the comments? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the folks same side? Thank you, Chief, I'll get that letter more and sign it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll open this, new business out of three years. It's the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two audit presentation, and we have with us tonight David Irwin. David is a CPA and advisor for Walden and Jenkins, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
That's right, that's right. Well, good evening, everyone, hope you all are doing well. Again, my name's David Irwin, and I'm with Walden Jenkins. I was the partner who oversaw this year's audit of the city's financial statements, and certainly appreciate the opportunity to, to be here this evening to discuss to you all the results of this year's audit. I don't, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but the purpose of this evening's presentation is to provide you all an overview of our independent auditor's report, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, talk about the results of the compliance report that we issue in conjunction with the audit, discuss some information that the auditing standards require that we communicate to you all, and to answer any questions that you all may have. I believe you all have received two documents. The thick document is the financial statement themselves. The thinner document with the city's center logo on it is something that we call our auditor's discussion analysis. This is an internal document, we prepare, we prepare solely for your benefit. It gives you some general information on who we are as a firm. It, it gives you a synopsis of some auditing standards that will be implemented in the upcoming years, and it summarizes what I'll be discussing with you all this evening. So if you want to follow along, please, please have this available. Now, the financial, financial statements themselves are the responsibility of city's management and members of the council. As your independent external auditors, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these statements. Now, we conduct our audits in accordance with governmental auditing standards and generally accepted auditing standards, and I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. Again, this is what you want, this is the this year's report. Um, again, this is what you want. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide as your external auditor. Uh, what this means is that, in our opinion, uh, the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Uh, as part of the audit, there is this, there is also a compliance report that we issue called the Yellow Book Report, um, which is a report on the city's internal controls and your compliance with various laws and regulations. And, uh, I'm pleased to say that we do not have any audit findings reported to you all this year. I mean, um, we noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, um, in the city's internal control during our audit. And, um, you, as I mentioned to you all last year, with all the new accounting standards are being implemented each year, and really just how complex the financial reporting process has become, um, i- it's always nice to be able to present to a city council, um, and audit with a clean opinion and no audit findings. So again, that's, that's certainly something that you all feel proud of. And, um, you know, to me, it speaks volumes about the hard work done by your staff. Um, Carol and her staff, they did a great job again this year. Uh, they had everything ready for us. They were very accommodating to our audit team and, uh, worked hard to address all of our questions and give us everything that we needed in order to get the audit finalized. And, um, you know, one thing about Carol that I, I very much appreciate, she is proactive rather than reactive. Um, if something comes up during the year that she has a question about, she'll go ahead and call us. She'll email us. Uh, she wants to go ahead and get, get, get those questions addressed. Uh, she wants to get it right the first time, and, and she doesn't want to wait until the audit, uh, begins to address any questions or problems. So, um, you know, that communicate, that communication that she has throughout the year with us, uh, certainly contributes to, to the smooth and timely audit. So, um, we have certainly enjoyed working with her and her staff again this year. And, uh, again, special thanks to her and, and all their hard work. Uh, now for a brief overview of your financial statements. You know, when you look at your financial statements, um, one section I always like to point out is the management's discussion analysis. Um, otherwise, it was the NVNA. Um, this is right after our audit opinion. It begins on page five of your financial statements. If, if there's only one section of this report, um, that you read, I, I would strongly encourage you to read the NVNA. Um, you know, the purpose of the NVNA is to make it easier for a broader audience, um, to, to better understand the financial statements. And it, it does this by providing a narrative explanation, um, of the financial statements from management's perspective. So again, um, this section does a really good job of summarizing the financial statements and, uh, providing the reader with an analytical overview of the financial activities that occur throughout the year. Um, in addition to this section, you, there, there's also quite a bit of comparative information in this section, meaning there's financial activity disclosed, um, for both fiscal years twenty-two and twenty-one. So, um, you know, to me, that adds a lot of value to the reader. It gives you a much better understanding of the, of the current year activity, um, when you pride the prior year activity available for comparative purposes. So, um, again, when you're looking at your financial statements, uh, if you can, please take the time to read through the NVNA. Now, the city's basic financial statements, they are broken down into three components, um, the first of which being the government-wide financial statements. If you turn to page five of our auditor's discussion analysis, which again is the, the thin document with the, the city of Centerville logo on it, um, page five, uh, briefly talks about this component. Now, again, um, the government-wide financial statements, they provide a broad view of the city's operations in a manner similar to what you would see in a private sector business. Um, all of the funds of the city are combined under e- either a governmental activities column or a business-type activities column, uh, depending on the nature of the fund. Um, unless anybody has any specific questions, I, I won't go into this section in too much detail. You know, this is really the only time you'll see, um, the city's financial activities reported in this manner. Um, you, in the day-to-day operations of the city, the focus is more so on the individual funds themselves, um, which brings me to your second component, uh, of the financial statements, which again are the fund-level statements. Um, again, this is what you all typically see throughout the year. Uh, the fund-level statements, they focus on the individual parts of the city, and they report the city's operations in more detail than that, um, of the government-wide statements. And, you, when you talk about all the different funds of the city, you know, if I'm in your shoes, a primary interest to me would be the general fund. Um, it's the main operating fund of the city and therefore accounts for the majority of your revenues received and funds expended. And, uh, you know, we have a couple of charts on page six of our auditor's discussion analysis, um, that breaks down the, the general funds' revenues and expenditures for the year. And when you look at this chart, again, total revenues of the general fund, they're around four point seven million dollars. That's right in line with FY twenty-one. It's on about sixty-six thousand dollar decrease, um, in FY twenty-two compared to FY twenty-one. So again, very, very comparable to prior year. Uh, the three significant sources of revenue for you all are property taxes, um, other taxes, and fines and forfeitures. Property tax were around two point seven million dollars for the year. Um, other taxes was around one point two million dollars. When I say other taxes, that's your insurance premium tax, um, your alcohol tax, and your franchise tax. And, uh, finally, fines and forfeitures were a little over four hundred forty-three thousand dollars for the year. Uh, the second chart on that page, again, shows the expenditures for the general fund, uh, which were around five point two million dollars. And that's a decrease of approximately one point three million dollars compared to FY twenty-one. Um, again, no surprise, uh, you know, the majority of your expenditures are for, for public safety, which is around three point two million. And, um, you all also had about eight hundred sixty-two thousand dollars in general government expenditures and seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars in public works expenditures for the year. So, um, after factoring in other financing sources, uh, such as transfers in from other funds and insurance proceeds, uh, the general fund's fund balance increased, uh, by approximately a hundred thirteen thousand dollars for the year, uh, for an ending balance of two point two million. And, you know, one thing I always like to remind people when we talk about fund balance, you know, that's not necessarily what you all have in the form of cash or discretionary spending. Uh, fund balance is merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which, um, is available cash. And, um, you know, additionally, one thing to, another thing to keep in mind, the general fund incurs expenditures of approximately four hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars per month. So, um, you all ended your fiscal year with a fund balance equal to around five months' worth of operating expenditures. And, um, you know, what that means is that as of June thirtieth, the city could theoretically operate for five months without any additional revenue sources. So, um, again, with you all having a June thirtieth year in, um, it's good to see, i- it's good to have a strong fund balance as of June thirtieth, um, because that's necessary to kind of cover you, uh, cover those expenditures through the months of July through October, July through November, when your revenues are typically down. So, um, again, that's, that's a strong fund balance for you all, um, especially for the, for the size of the city. So again, that's, that's certainly something you all should be proud of. Um, aside from the general fund, um, you know, you all have numerous other governmental funds, uh, special revenue funds, capital projects funds. Uh, for the sake of time, I won't go into those in detail, but, um, they are all in, in good shape financially as well. A couple of other funds I want to briefly mention are the city's enterprise funds, uh, which again are your water sewer, your sanitation, and your stormwater funds. Again, um, enterprise funds, uh, they're used to account for operations, uh, similar to a private sector business. The goals, the, the goal of these funds are to be self-sufficient and to generate, uh, sufficient operating, uh, revenues to cover your operating expenditures. And, uh, if, if you turn to page eight of our auditor's discussion analysis, we have a chart there. And, uh, as you can see on that chart, each of these three funds, uh, did the, did such, did, uh, just that this year. They were, they were all self-sufficient. They all had operating income, and, uh, they all generated positive operating cash flows, which, um, again, is what you want to see out of your enterprise funds. Uh, the third and final component of your financial statements are the footnotes. Um, you know, the footnotes, they disclose the city's accounting methods and, uh, provide an expanded explanation of your operational and financial results. Uh, there really weren't any significant changes to your footnotes this year. So unless anybody has any specific questions, um, I won't go into those in detail. But, um, again, one final item to discuss, um, as I mentioned earlier, it's just certain information that the auditing standards require that we communicate to you all. Um, you know, with you all receiving a clean opinion, no audit findings, this is kind of essentially a formality. But, um, you know, we received full cooperation from city management and staff. Um, there were no disagreements with management over any kind of accounting-related issues. Um, there were no uncorrected misstatements. And, uh, again, we are independent of the city, um, as required by governmental auditing standards. And, uh, with that, unless anybody has specific questions, that concludes my presentation. But, um, you know, as you can see, there's a, there's a lot of information in this report. Uh, what I've tried to do is just hit the highlights, what I think is the most important to you all. But, um, if anybody has any specific questions, again, I'll be, I'll be happy to answer those. But, um, you know, again, we, um, certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all. And, uh, I want to thank your staff one more time for all their hard work this year. And, um, we, uh, look forward to working in the future.
If I have any questions?
I have a comment.
Good.
So I'd like to say that very well, present, the presentation is very clear, and we, and we certainly appreciate that. And also, uh, compliments to Carol and the staff for all their outstanding work together and being able to come up with this, uh, result. I know it takes a lot of work and, uh, and a lot of oversight. And, and again, we appreciate, uh, which your language word and the reports as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carroll. Carol, of course, can I say that about you and yourself? Any other people you have around that support you?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I don't afford formal information on Christmas funds. We have a Christmas fund that we set up in the budget every year. And then, by this time of year, we announce if we can afford it. So if we can afford it, yeah, let's see if we can. We have sixty-one full-time employees and fourteen part-time employees. The full-time employees will receive a bonus of two hundred and sixteen dollars fifty-seven cents, uh, which covers the employees' bike employee. So the employee ends up getting two hundred dollars. And the part-time employees basically stay and get a hundred dollars. Clear? Thank you, our employees, all of them, everyone here? Okay, next item one here is, uh, item number five, approve the P-Bass street water sampling contract. What the board has written for operations of the alternative.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, in fact, you should have a copy of the budget estimate and the contract with Pace Analytical. What this is, is a, another unfunded mandate the state has put upon us to do some water sampling. This sampling won't actually start or occur until the year twenty twenty-four. So we won't spend any money or, and we'll budget it for the twenty twenty-four budget year. Uh, what this is, the state requires us to be on a EPA-approved list laboratory, which is very few in the state of Georgia. We've worked with Pace Analytical before. We're familiar with them. They provided us a price, a not-to-exceed price of eight thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, that is worst-case scenario money, what that they've, they've advised us that if our beginning samples all come back good, then a lot of the samples they won't have to do. So this kind, so this price could come way down and probably will. But we have to be, like I said, by, by January one, we have to be on the approved list for the sampling. And, and this is what we've done. So, I, the city attorney has looked over the contract, and she is, she is okay with it. And, uh, we're here tonight to ask for permission from the mayor to sign this contract with Pace Analytical.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract with Pace Analytical for the water testing in the future year.
Second. Vote for the second. Uh, please, some questions. Eight thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars, is that a buck for tea or?
No, sir, that's, that's, that's a total for the year.
For the year.
Yes, sir. Like I said, it, it'll be, it, it, that's worst-case scenario. It'll be much less than that, I, I'm for sure. But, but, but that's the not-to-exceed number.
I get those things about every two, two, three times a week. It seems like I get a lot of.
That's what I was fixing to tell you, that, that, the email you keep asking me about, this is it. We've got it. We're done.
Because I knew that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
When we had this.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
The state keeps reminding me you can get it done. You know, I appreciate that. I want to get, uh, I have a lot of water, like two thousand weeks. It seems like we probably have two thousand and one.
Yes, sir.
I get a letter concerning quality of water. Only one time in almost fifty years I've been here now, there's a, had a problem or something. You know what that was? I was collecting the rain.
Yep.
They were out, they had to collect it. So they went.
Camera data sample.
Rainwater got into the, the water we were getting. Rainwater not good. It failed the test. But we straightened that out. Okay. Uh, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the both same side? That's, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm so proud of this. I might just put this in the middle of this for a while. All right, item number six is approve budget amendment SPOS eighteen fund, additional note payment, fire station, Captain Wright, and City Account Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. We have in our packets this evening, uh, a letter that's been drafted for your signature, Mayor, to Mr. Ron Byfield, the marketing president of Sonovus Bank. And it is brief, so I will just read it. Uh, it says, "Dear Ron, please accept this letter as written notice to exercise prepayment as stated under, quote, optional redemption, quote, in the financing agreement set out for the city of Centerville Fire Station. The city will submit a prepayment of five thousand, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars to be applied to the accrued interest from the date of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, to the posting date with the balance applied to the principal. The city will not re-admiratize the loan payments and will continue with the existing schedule and the next installment of five hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents, due on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. The city appreciates the bank relationship with Sonovus and the services provided by the Sonovus team. This is just, uh, a vote for us to authorize the mayor to sign this letter and approve this payment, uh, on the, the loan payment for our new fire station." And, uh, Carol, is there anything that I missed or is that?
Uh, that summarizes it. Uh, as we vote to approve the prepayment, we would also be voting to amend the budget, um, by the additional amount of money. And that would come from our SPOS fund balance, that would.
Yes, and I suppose this is pre-designated SPOS money that's set up at the fire station.
Right, right. And just, just because we have these excess SPOS funds, that gives us the opportunity to kind of get ahead with this one a little bit.
So, Mayor, I move that we, uh, authorize you to, uh, sign this letter, that we authorize, uh, the prepayment on this loan, and that we, uh, amend the budget to reflect the same.
Second. Vote for the second. If you're in discussion.
Please, sir, Mr. Mayor, have a question. Uh, Carol, I noticed that that, um, letter talks about interest and principal.
That's right.
Do we know how much principal that's going to take here?
That's going to take care of, um, goodness, let's see, the, the payment's five ninety-three. I think the interest is going to be fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, excellent.
Five seventy-eight.
So that's going to save the science.
It's going to save the.
There's even more money on interest.
It's going to save us an additional thirty-one thousand in interest, which will, uh, take the original interest of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand down to two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars interest with the prior prepayment that we made as well. So saving to the hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of interest by taking this in the prior prepayment.
That's all money we're saving for citizens.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Anybody else? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the both same side? Okay, all will sign the letter. We have Congress and Council next. Uh, post one, please.
I just wanted to, again, uh, say thank you to Carol and the, everyone else who was a part of the audit. Having these audits with, uh, you know, significant finds or no find at all is, is always good news. And, uh, we really appreciate, uh, the good job that you do every day, work during these audits and everybody. Uh, and also, um, uh, sorry that a lot of the guests had left already, but, um, thank you for your service, all, to all the veterans out there, including the few that we have up here. Um, you are makes our country what it is, and, and you are who helps keep it that way, including, uh, the service that you continue to provide to the city. Uh, that's all I have.
Okay, post two, please.
Uh, I'll just take a minute, Mayor, to say thank you to all of the home workers who volunteered to work on Election Day last week. That is a very long, very, uh, arduous, very tenuous job these days. So I want to thank them for their, uh, hard work and for the hard work that they're going to do in the future, because we got a runoff coming up on December the sixth. So please make sure, uh, that you take the time to get out and vote one more time at least in this particular calendar year.
Thank you.
Vote free.
Yes, sir. And Councilman Barrett, I want to, uh, give you my personal thank you for your acknowledgement of our service. Really appreciate that. And the service of, of all those who are here tonight, and, sir, and those who continue to serve. Definitely because, uh, as you say, uh, freedom is a free. because, uh, as you say, uh, freedom isn't free, but we get to enjoy it every day because people are willing to sacrifice, uh, the opportunities that they have to serve, so thank you very much, appreciate that, and, um, again, thank you to the staff, to, to the, um, county department, and to the rest of the staff for all this hard work, to the department heads for the way you manage your budgets, uh, so that we're able to take advantage of, of opportunities like this to save the city additional money, uh, I think that's a great thing, so, uh, really appreciate it.
Thank you, vote four.
Yes, sir, I appreciate the opportunity, especially for the man of council to host the, uh, veteran state observance here, uh, and also certainly want to reach out and thank Pastor Matt Olson, uh, the Illicit Association, and Rolling Thunder for coming and being participants of our, of our observance. And also, again, I, uh, I wanted to thank Carol and the staff for everything that y'all do every day, I know, and you know, this city is not run without, uh, without your interaction and daily business that you conduct, such as, as they mentioned, as, uh, Councilman Wright mentioned about the, uh, the elections, I mean, it takes a lot of work for, for Krista and the others to go out there and set that all up, make it happen, uh, this, you know, again, it just speaks volumes about our employees, and, and I'm glad that we, uh, elected to approve the bonus Christmas prize, because it's certainly well deserved, and, uh, that's all, that's all I have to say, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. You know, I've had an opportunity to speak in one of one veteran's things over the year, and one of the things I always like to hear, and we miss it too often, if we're not careful, veterans, you know, they, they sacrifice a lot, but the families back home, they sacrifice a lot, too, you should always recognize what the families did, supporting their people who were in harm's way. My wife told me a couple of stories, a couple of times and things, and all that in harm's way, and how she felt and what was going on, you know, it just sort of broke my heart the way, uh, we need to keep us, the families in mind, too, whenever we have veterans there, really do. Okay, I thank everybody, and I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving.
Mayor, before we close out, if we can add one, uh, reminder, remind everybody that the annual Centerville Lighter Christmas Parade is on December, December the third of this year.
December the third.
December the third of this year, yeah, it's coming up.
See, that's our scene that makes it work, too. Our team does an outstanding job of it, this is what, thirteenth year now?
I don't know, I'm thinking it's fifteen, maybe fifteen.
Okay, I'm still counting the ones that we weren't able to do, so.
Fifteen years.
We'll, we'll count that, yes, the intent was, that's correct, the precoration was there.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, good to see you.